Minutes from the January thirteenth meeting. Any questions, comments, or motion?
Second.
Ms. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Kizer?
Yes.
Mr. Kennedy?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yeah.
Ms. Perkins?
Yes.
Mr. Walter?
Yes.
Do you also receive the current expenses? Questions?
Yeah, could you just go through, since we're kind of new to this and don't know what a lot of this is, just so we can get an understanding of what these are?
Yes. Everyone, or?
Um.
The obvious, I guess.
Yes.
Everyone. Okay.
Am I right?
It could be auto parts, that is a tow that we have to expend and the police department recovers through their fines and stuff. And they charge back to Kirby's, um, I don't believe so, I believe they're out of Marysville.
We have a, we have a call, it's usually the fastest ones who respond and basically, and we have an agreement set up with them already so that they don't charge as much as normal people do, so we hold the cars and then they have to pay their towing to get it out, if they don't then we claim for the title of the car then we sell it later at auction, so.
Okay. All is a police, uh, uniform, police management's, the refuse, that was the final December payment that we had to make to them, Office Depot, Staples Advantage is office supplies, Ohio City, that's going to be only a one-time thing, you're going to see, that was a membership due for a village administrator, um, Heritage Cooperative, that's going to be monthly, that will be, uh, gas and diesel for the village vehicles, Liberty Leasing will also be monthly, um, that is for copier leasing, we have one police department zoning office and the village, uh, office, Granger, that is, I think, it's like a supply house for public-
We buy a handful of tools, supplies, uh, I believe this one was for, um, either a pump or a exhaust fan down at the water plant.
BZ Communications, I believe that was probably batteries or chargers for the Marx radios or for the-
Yeah.
That's just a, an annual expense, I mean, not a annual, but as needed, Treasure State of Ohio, actually that was the police cruiser, no more phone tag, it's a phone trace, so when you call it tells you what lines, if you want, uh, Capital Tire, that was, uh, tires for vehicles, Masai is lab testing for the water and wastewater stuff, and that, you'll see that recurring every two weeks probably, Time Warner Cable, that is just one of the, uh, Road Runner accounts that we have, uh, Edge Technology, that's, uh, the gentleman that came out to counsel last at Tony, just for computer technology stuff, I believe that was also, we had to update the, uh, the police department cruiser, Windows Seven, that was seven hundred and fifty dollars, correct?
Yeah.
Occupational Health, that is our drug testing, Morton Salt, like we've talked about during personal fines is road salt and, uh, plant salt, uh, me, for the drug testing, the mild aluminum reimbursement, uh, Century Link, that is the relay line that the police department uses, that's going to be a monthly cost, uh, Bonded, uh, Ryan Huff, that was a uniform reimbursement, up to two hundred and fifty they get, the public works employees, Bonded Chemicals, that is ferric chloride and chlorine for the water and sewer plants, non-keeper door sales, I believe that is your street garage door.
Where does Street Garage Door break?
Um, Northland Towing, again, that's the police department whenever they impound a car, Ohio Health Urgent Care, we had an employee that, um, had his lip busted and he went and had stitches, so that's what that is.
It's not covered by that.
I consider that it's not covered by that. We do have workers' comp, but we also have an agreement with workers' comp that we pay the first fifteen, first ten or fifteen thousand, it's been a long time since we've had to use it, um, we've also agreed to, and on the whole same line to reduce our workers' comp rates, we've also agreed to continue the employees' wages while they're off work type of thing, so they don't tap into the workers' comp.
However, there was no loss of wages during this event.
Lowe's Home Improvement, you're going to have to help me on that, Kevin, for the thousand dollars.
For what?
Lowe's, I believe we bought a pressure washer.
Yeah, that's miscellaneous, actually it was a air compressor, the large air compressor at the street garage went out, that was about nine hundred dollars of that, um, and just miscellaneous things throughout the village that we need, they could go to Lowe's and grab.
I have a receipt saved here for Mr. Wade, do you want to help me, we bought a refrigerator and?
Shop back.
Shop back.
Refrigerator that we needed was a, it's a small dorm size refrigerator and we have to keep samples that we collect, uh, stored in that refrigerator and that's what it's used for.
Who is the Osburn signs for?
Osborne signs.
Osborne signs is, uh, street signage.
Um, again, Masai, Harrington Plastic, you're going to have to, I don't know those little details. You, that's you, Coshon got it. Cedar Craft, mailboxes, um, being taken down during snow removal, Bresco Broadband, um, and prior reports that showed that the Solarity, Solarity was bought out by Bresco and that is the Wi-Fi for the park. Z-Tech Transmissions, John's Truck's transmission went out, so we had to use that, Catherine Barker, that's, um, snowplow stuff issues, Gainway, again, I think that's actually a snowplow and they had to make something out of bracket, didn't they, Gainway?
Yes.
USA Blue Book is supplies for the sewer and water plants, asphalt materials, that's for, to repair, uh, patch, patchwork.
Pot-holing.
Local Waste Services, they build, Waste Management building arrears, local waste builds eight miles ahead, so that's why it's on there. Thank you. No problem.
No motion.
Who do accept a current expense?
Ms. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Kizer?
Yes.
Mr. Kennedy?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Ms. Perkins?
Yes.
Mr. Walter?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. I moved into reports and, um, mind short, just had, um, Plain City Business Association met Wednesday and I just wanted to say that that seems to really finally be coming into its own, there were thirty-five mem- uh, members present at that meeting and it was a good meeting and, uh, a fair amount of our local business, uh, individuals were there, so I think it's finally becoming a good organization for networking in the community and surrounding communities. I also wanted to, um, in this meeting, appoint Alan Perkins and Ma- Mark Hostetler to the Design Review Board, those two positions, um, were open, so they're, I'm appointing them. And we didn't mention Upco in our last meeting, but, um, since Bob is the treasurer on that co-board, if you're all good with it, we'll just let him be the liaison report. Upco. And one other thing is that we've had, um, John Jordan let me know that, and he did a while back, but with all the changes for state, I just waited, um, and BCA, Board of Designing Appeals, uh, John Caltenbeck has, his, his schedule has not allowed him to come to about thirteen meetings now and those are so few and far between, we, we need to replace him, and that is, the council does that, and, um, our liaison from council previously was Todd Skidmore, and Todd knew that John was approaching me, Todd said he was willing to serve there if we were interested in appointing him to, to John's old position, so if that's acceptable to you, then I would recommend that and accept a motion.
I'd make such a motion, seconded.
Ms. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Kizer?
Yes.
Mr. Kennedy?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Ms. Perkins?
Yes.
Mr. Walter?
Yes.
All right, thank you. All right, Renee, do you have any?
No, ma'am, just don't. Chief Hill?
Hello, I just have a few things, um, Officer Flowers attended a marijuana identification course, this makes him an expert to be able to testify in court, um, to cannabis for us, it's an outsourcing thing that we have to do now, we have to drive it, take it to another facility to have it tested, so we're saving time and travel with us doing this in-house, so, um, no, he's not, uh, sampling the, uh, that's not how you become an ex-, that's not how you become an expert, yeah, back in college. Um, we were awarded a grant from OCGS for Mark's mobile radios and the, it's about sixty-five hundred dollar grant, that's going to allow us to purchase two mobile radios, but there's a ten percent match on that, so I, I wanted to thank Sergeant Jaskowitz for his work on this grant, so another successful grant for us, which is good. I've conducted panel interviews with two volunteer applicants, I want to thank Mr. Walter for attending the panel interview for that and assisting there, um, we're getting them scheduled for some additional testing, um, to see if they'll eventually make a recommendation to the mayor to appoint them, um, I also want to thank the new council members, um, Ms. Davis, Ms. Perkins, Mr. Kennedy for coming to the police department, did a tour through the facility, which took about forty-five seconds, and then showed them some police department operations, I do appreciate you coming down, taking the time.
Thank you.
And then, um, I met with Sergeant McKee and I met with representatives from BNC for our FCC regulations, licensing for radios, our licensing's due up this year, so they're going to assist with getting, uh, the license and tune and permit, it's up to date and it's not going to be a very expensive, uh, thing, which is good for them to assist us on that, I got a, uh, a notification today, it'd be about a hundred and fifty dollars for them to assist us with this, so FCC fines would be about a hundred fold that per day, so it's a good investment, so that's all I have.
Any question? Chief.
Um, Friday, we closed on auction on gov deals on two of the vehicles that we had posted, one was the Field Jimmy and it sold for thirty-one hundred dollars, the other one was for our Durapatcher and that final sale went for thirty thousand one hundred and fifty dollars, which is a lot better than expected, so, um, several of the recent snow events went quite well, we haven't had, uh, too many major issues to report there. I know most of you have seen the condition of the salt barn and I just wanted to put on everybody's radar that, uh, it's going to have to be something that needs to be addressed, uh, before next snow season, I'm currently working on different options and pricings of which way we can go that, with, uh, with those upgrades. And, uh, the last thing I have this evening, I'd like to introduce our new water and wastewater superintendent, Wade Limeister, uh, who joins us this evening with his wife Tracy, I'm very excited to have Wade working with us, he came from Lima and hit the ground both feet running and has made a, a couple of really good improvements just in the short week that he's been here, so, great to have him here.
Welcome.
And that's all I have, unless there's any further questions.
Welcome, Wade, nice to meet you, welcome to stay or not, your choice.
Were you talking to me?
Okay, person first in.
I have nothing for that, unless we're interested in a time scheduling a work session, I mentioned this last night, but if you're interested, if something comes up tonight where you feel like you need a little more time to dig into it, did you feel like something like that?
There'll be a recommendation for us in about five minutes and we'll, we'll talk about it.
Okay, so then, other than that?
Mr. McPhail?
Um, I have, uh, just been working on the under-speed vehicle issue with, uh, Chief Hill and we'll address that, I guess, in local business.
Okay. Colleen?
Planning and zoning. Yeah, planning and zoning met on the fifteenth and, um, if you remember the last time, the size of the homes was the issue, um, originally, it had been changed, I think originally it was eighteen hundred and two thousand and they came back with fifteen hundred for ranches and sixteen hundred for two stories, um, the committee did agree and worked out with, um, Mr. Andrews, a minimum of fifteen hundred for the ranch and eighteen hundred for the two-story, um, he does, uh, he did say that they're looking at probably the upper two hundreds to low three hundreds is what they're looking at selling, so even, th- those are minimums, so, you know, they could build a two thousand or twenty-three hundred square foot on what they want. We also discussed, um, the vinyl that was stated, um, could be sixty-six percent on the front of the house and he did verify that it was the higher quality vinyl, um, on the homes, um, we did discuss the bike pass and I can't remember if we discussed that at the last meeting, where the entrance was, so originally I think it had been going straight across and it had changed to go across, down and across, sorry? Down and across. Up and across. Up and across. So it's by an intersection, so it'll, we thought it would be a little safer, so the committee did agree to allow that, um, that change, um.
Basement, partial basement?
Yeah, the partial basement, um, they agreed to, um, having a requirement for a minimum of a partial basement in our homes, um, we also approved letting them use the C nine hundred plastic water main as opposed to the ductile iron pipe for certain areas, um, as well as poly lines opposed to copper pipe, um, for the connections, um, and then the road was, were discussed as well and, um, after much discussion, um, agreed upon with the twenty-four feet, inches, says feet here, is it? No, it's feet, it's feet, and then, um, there was questions about the tree removal and the setback, um, if there was diseased trees, how that, how that would happen, what would be done, and it really is going to require delay approval for that piece, um, and there also was talk about the no build zone that extends out to the tributary, um, planning, meadow grass, um, and in the books, in the pamphlets they give us, it shows some pictures of that as well, so the committee agreed to all that and so I believe we are looking for approval from council on those changes.
Last time we spoke, we talked, I think Mr. Vaughn made a recommendation for us to keep the twenty-seven foot streets, perhaps I'm remembering incorrectly, but why now with twenty-four feet?
It's not twenty-four feet for all of them, it's just for the small, the smaller roads, so it's, the main roads would be at the twenty-seven feet, the smaller are going to be at the twenty-four.
When you say smaller, how's that defined, you just talked about like the main roads twenty-seven feet and the arterial roads or whatever they were called?
Yeah, the interior roads.
Twenty-four feet?
Correct.
I think there's four interior roads that they're talking about.
Yes.
Where the subdivision is the main road, it kind of looks around like that, there's like three there and then going on with ours, so, they have a smaller connection, so.
Wasn't the, and again, I might not be correct, but wasn't the concern that the smaller roads wouldn't allow emergency vehicles, twenty-four feet roads wouldn't allow the emergency vehicles to get through?
Yeah, we did discuss that and, um, I know they had spoken with Chief Kidd before that and he does not think that that would be an issue. As long as there's no cars.
Wouldn't twenty-four allow like parking on just one side?
One parking, yes, you're right.
The non-hydrant side.
I, and if I can reiterate, Chief Kidd, I did speak with Chief Kidd and he didn't have, he had a problem with it, but there wasn't a legal position to stand on to require it to be wider, but he, it was his preference that they would be wider.
It's wide enough for the vehicles, it's just tight.
What do we gain from moving it from twenty-seven to twenty-four feet, I mean, we as the village, what do we gain, I mean, if it, it makes it tight for our emergency vehicles, why do we agree to it?
The only issue that I recall from the meeting, and this is just my recollection of it, the developer brought up the issue that they had studies, we didn't think what they do, but they brought up, uh, that there were studies that reflected that the wider the road, the faster the traffic, and the narrower the road, the slower the traffic, and that was really, that's the only positive that I remember, uh, being advocated by the developer.
It's called traffic calming and it was discussed in the comprehensive plan, planning back in two thousand two, two thousand three as well, so, and I think there was reference made in the meeting minutes that Dublin has approved streets of similar width and.
So, yes, they're looking for the approval so they can move forward?
My question, I have one other question.
Okay.
The, um, the plan, Colleen, that you had was dated, uh, January sixth, has that plan been updated to reflect the agreements, uh, that, or the approvals that Planning and Zoning offered or agreed to la- last week?
And that's what I was going to say, I don't think we can move forward with an, with a, a vote tonight because we have not seen or have been, there's no, been no design plans submitted, um, to reflect what P and Z had approved, so there's no design plans brought forth to the council tonight to approve.
My, my recommendation would be that because there's a lot of different moving parts and there's a lot of different kind of smaller issues that we've discussed, that council will hold off in voting on anything until we actually have the plan in front of us, because somewhere a year from now, we want to have a plan that, uh, we've all agreed upon and so we know exactly, so that we're not talking about, well, do you remember in that one meeting where we changed this, I don't want, I don't want that.
Ideally, it should be in one planning document.
Have you heard from them?
They've asked to have a meeting with myself and Mr. Jordan, um, for some additional items and we're working on, uh, setting that date.
I don't mean to beat it down, but I want to go back to the, the road width, I mean, when I asked my question, all I've heard in response is that there's a study out there that no one's seen, the developer cites, that it's good for us, and to me, that's not any evidence to me that it's good for us, that it actually produces slower, safer roadways, so I guess I ask again, if Chief Kidd is saying that he would prefer it based upon, you know, emergency services to keep it at twenty-seven feet, how, how should we as a council see that we're okay with twenty-four feet based upon the soul piece of information that the developer says that produces slower streets? I, I guess I'm asking you, Colleen.
Well, and if I could step in.
Yeah.
My husband was at the meeting the other night and when Mr. Lee spoke of Dublin's streets, he was wrong, um, and he, I forward this all to you, that he sent this to me, that he told, uh, the commission that Dublin also has twenty-four foot wide streets, twenty-seven feet to the back of the curb, the minimum public street width in Dublin is actually twenty-eight feet measured to back of curb, this would include twenty-four feet of asphalt width and adjoining eighteen inch curb and six inch curb on both sides, now, can I refer to you about Upper Arlington, John Rucker?
I, I unfortunately am not.
You don't know?
I don't know what the kids are over there.
Okay.
I apologize.
Now, he has cited Dublin's fire code, granted Dublin has taken on a little bit of their own fire code in addition to the Ohio revised code, um, but, uh, he was very concerned about getting a, a large truck in there with the.
Outriggers.
Outriggers, thank you, when there's a fire and there's cars parked there, they can't get the outriggers set down, and two, he was concerned about the cul-de-sacs, um, the ones in Dublin, I'm sorry, I have this all written down because I can't remember off the top of my head, the minimum cul-de-sac diameter dimension in Dublin is eighty feet for street measuring a hundred and fifty to five hundred feet in length, um, it's minimal design without creating a sea of asphalt, it appears that the red oak drive cul-de-sac is only seventy feet in width at the turnaround, um, although Pleasant Valley Fire Apparatus can make this turn, they should only be designed for aero apparatus that would be dispatch on a fire call for automatic manual aid, so he was concerned about that size of the cul-de-sac also, so that might be something else that we can look at, he would certainly be available answering questions.
And, um, since you're going to be meeting with him, I would say that's just something that you share with him again, that kind of questioning it and I think they were somewhat flexible with that, um.
Do we have a sense, I mean, as a homeowner, is it more attractive to purchase in an area with larger streets, ultimately our design is to attract individuals who are willing to spend two hundred and fifty or three hundred thousand dollars on a home, is there any market study that we're aware of that says, you know, larger two hundred and fifty, three hundred thousand dollar homes generally have larger streets, they're more attractive to the folks who are able to purchase such a home, because ultimately that's our goal here, right, to provide a spot where people are willing to come in and spend their money in Plain City, so not only do we have to consider the emergency services, but I think we neglected to speak whatsoever about providing an attractive area to get these folks here, so with that said, do we know of any type of information that was suggested larger streets attract a larger income home or a larger, more expensive home?
I know we talked about California Hills and I don't know if they have the smaller, the twenty-four feet, but we did talk about that there's not as many cars that park on the street in the newer, when they're bigger homes. When they're bigger homes.
I believe we have the wi- I'm in New California Hills and I believe we have the wider streets.
And the option here is that if it's a more narrow street, then you can restrict parking on one side, you can eliminate it and.
Well, I'm imagining, for example, Mayor, if I were to have a Christmas party and only be able to invite ten people because there's no room, um, you know, I mean, those kinds of things may seem trivial, but, you know, when someone's going to come in and say, you know, I'm going to spend three hundred thousand dollars here, but I don't want to be restricted because, you know, I've got three kids and we have five SUVs and we've nowhere to park them.
Well, I have a good example, I live on Gray Street and Gray Street came in after the fact because the bypass, um, at one time our house, our driveway connected right to main and they came in, put in Gray Street, I don't know what Gray Street is, twenty feet maybe, twenty-two feet?
We haven't measured it exactly.
But they constantly, yeah, they constantly have two cars parked down there, the trash, sometimes they get picked up in the summer, the snowplows have not been through there and, you know, when we have a party, fortunately we have enough yard to park them, but, you know, we've had a couple of large parties where the cars were everywhere, it was a nightmare, so to me, I would think that's a plus, had we looked at our house now, with the street was there, I'd say no, no, the street would have been a factor.
And obviously if our, the only plus I'm hearing is twenty-four feet streets are, um, not a drag strip, I mean, the cars go slower, I mean, we have alternative means to control that, i.e., we're fine with the police department, um, so, I mean, if that's the only reason we do twenty-four feet streets to control speed, we can do that in other ways, that's.
So, um, Kevin will talk to them when they, when he meets with them, it's, we're not, um, approving anything tonight, so it'll have to, it sounds like, go back to planning and zoning again anyway, um.
Well, I think, the, Colleen, was it, your thoughts of planning and, planning and zoning approved this, making a recommendation to council?
Sorry?
This, was that the way you interpreted the decision last week?
Yeah, but we'll have to have the actual plan.
Okay, the, okay, but for council to reject a recommendation for planning and zoning, I believe it requires a two-thirds majority of council to overturn a planning and zoning recommendation, so.
Yeah, I think we still have to have the document in front of us.
Yeah, I agree there.
Uh, the, the only concern I have at this point is that.
It's stone.
Right, the concern I have at this point is if, if Kevin is meeting with them tomorrow or whenever you're meeting with them, uh, to discuss any additional changes, that if there are additional changes, then we're back to P and Z again, because P and Z has to look at it, uh, and approve it, and so every time there's a change, it's, P and Z has to approve it, then we have to get the final plan so that there's something to recommend or provide to council, um.
Yeah, I think the fact that they've asked to talk about. Yeah, I think the fact that they've asked to talk about some changes, uh, is, is a good basis for it not to be deliberated on by council and to do a reopening of discussions with planning and zoning if warranted. The, uh, the developer's doing this in a way to, to improve his business model. I mean, uh, and you can't blame him. And I, I think really he's, the village and the developer attracted to strike a good balance for attractive, safe, and affordable housing. And, uh, so it, it's been a balancing, it's a balancing act, it always will be. And, uh, just understand that, you know, any decision we make could, or, or planning and zoning can make could go force them back to do re, redo engineering drawings and, and delay the process. So, we, you wanna think out real carefully what you ask for and, and what might be involved with that request. I'm not professing to give, you know, the house away, you certainly don't wanna do that. But, but there is a balancing act, and it's been a negotiation that's moved forward. Hopefully, you, you wanna get to a point where there's a total consensus, so...
Just I remember, uh, we don't have, we currently don't have anything in the fire ordinance that determines the size of streets.
In the Ohio, I believe in the Ohio Revised Code, it does state a narrower road that's, but I'm not certain of that. I would have to, uh, ask Chief Kidd for the specifics on that.
As far as, uh, aerial trucks accessing smaller streets, right now, we haven't, our code prohibits anything greater than thirty feet in height. So, that's, the need for aerial may not, in the near terms, not there.
Mr. Rucker, did you wanna say something?
Well, I will say this, the aerial, the vapor company fire set on Main Street.
Uh, no, they had, they had an aerial, they had a couple of aerial ladders set up on that building.
Okay, and they were able to get an aerial back on Bigelow?
They parked it on, on company property.
Okay. And I'm not an expert there, I'll rephrase my comments.
And, all right, a couple more questions. Kevin, you've obviously had dealings with the developer, the twenty-four to twenty-seven. Is this a deal breaker for him? I can't imagine that it is. And what kind of savings is he getting by having the interior streets three feet shorter?
The, the savings to him on the four streets going from twenty-seven feet to twenty-four feet would be eighty-four thousand dollars savings to him.
Which is a pers- what percentage of profits?
Of profits.
What, what percentage of, you know, the total cost per car is this significant? I mean, eighty-four thousand dollars seems in and of itself as a lot of money. However, in the grand scheme of things, it might not be that much.
Total project value, I mean, that's everything built out, cost of homes, cost of, uh, infrastructure, is about seventy million dollars.
And so, he's gonna argue eighty-four thousand?
Um, he had stated to me that it was not a deal breaker.
The, the thing is, Kevin, now, we're gonna have to repair that street. It's gonna cost us more money than we have to do it.
That was, that was brought up, um, that it would be cheaper to repave with the twenty-four streets, twenty-four foot streets and the twenty-seven. Not that that's a reason, but that was one of them.
No, I, I certainly thought about that, and my thinking went something along those lines. We have larger homes there because it attracts more expensive homes than the increase in revenue certainly offsets any decrease in how much it costs to reasphalt those roads.
It is a cut saw. We have a water main break that our guys are currently working on. Right, it's Bigelow, or, yeah, Bigelow and Kenny.
Should we be boiling our water?
No.
All right. We comfortable moving on?
What is that meeting?
Yeah.
When you're, when you have a city.
We're, we're trying to set it up. We've been having some issues coordinating.
Okay. All right, that's another great thing. All right, Kevin, C I C?
I attended a mode annual meeting, uh, about a week ago. It was really good. I got a chance to meet a lot of good people that are in the industry and, um... Also, I have a C I C meeting for tomorrow evening, uh, was moved to Thursday evening due to, uh, the weather that is expected. So, I will be there Thursday.
Sean?
Uh, a few things. We had a park meeting, uh, last week, and, uh, a couple of things I wanted to kind of bring up for us to chew on and think about a little bit. One is, we had talked in the past, at least the last council, had talked about, um, kind of bringing camp registration and the operation of the pool and just the rental of park facilities all under one kind of umbrella system. Uh, and we had asked Mr. Vaughn to kind of look around and see what's out there. He brought to the group a couple of recommendations that he felt pretty good about, but it seemed like we all had, had agreed on, uh, this one, uh, system called Vermont System. Um, and they, they run it, I believe, at, like, at the Dublin, Dublin Recs. And, and so, uh, Ke- Kevin and, um, the person on, Aaron Farmor, on our committee, went with and checked it out. There's some issues, but overall, they think it's, it's a good system. Now, it would be an investment to kind of get it all in one system so that folks can register for the campground if they live in Florida. They can register online, get a spot secured, and travel up here and stay there, not have to worry about getting here and calling ahead, that could be all online. Also, with the pool operation, they could run everything off of this with, uh, the system. And shelter house or youth building rental, all that could be, uh, put into one package, basically. And so, we're not really ready to, I guess because of budgetary issues, we have to wait a little bit. Feel free to, to jump in if I, if I mess this up. But I think we, we have to wait a little while to, to, uh, request official funding for this. But the, the thought of the committee was, it's time to invest in something because it's really, not really twenty-first century at all. And probably losing some money on campground registrations and things like that, so this would be a way to tighten that up. The overall system is probably around thirty-eight, thirty-nine thousand dollars. But they do offer a, kind of a payment, uh, plan where you can pay it over a period of years. And there's no, um, no fees after that, right, Kevin? I mean, they don't take a percentage or anything like that.
There's no per transaction fee. There is a thirty-eight hundred dollar per year, um, software management maintenance agreement.
Some of the other ones we looked at where they would take a transaction fee of six percent, five to six percent.
Six and a half percent.
And that, we just didn't feel like that was something we wanted to recommend. But it is something we have to ponder now. Is it something we wanna invest in? Do you want to, uh, have it all kind of operating smoothly and kind of web-based and, and up to the times? Or, uh, do we want to just kind of, kind of keep it the way it is? I guess the committee's recommendation would be to, um, move towards something like the Vermont System.
And it needs to be said that appropriations would be out of the park and pool, uh, carryover balances fund, um, and not under the general fund.
So, if we, we decided to add different programs for the park, you know, other rec activities, do we add that on to those programs?
I would think so. I think it's the, kind of the best, one of the best out there, it seemed to, from what we read. I think it would cover everything that we could ever possibly imagine doing in the park.
What are, are we currently paying anything for the pool system? We currently have...
We use a couple of different software systems to, to run the pool. There is, I can't remember the name of it.
Easy facility.
Easy facility.
Does the scheduling of the pool parties, the daily admissions, pools memberships, do we pay two forty-nine a month for that?
And then, for them to book pool parties and swim lessons online, we use a third party called Local Level. And they take, it's transaction-based percentage. And then we use shift planning for scheduling and purposes of that. For staff.
And that cost? Seventy-five a month.
For the three months or all year?
Not all year. It's, they start, cause the pool employees start working in April, getting their certifications and stuff. So, it's April, May, June, July, August, and then September because September falls on Labor Day. So, we have to pay all of September, and it's September one to October one, so then we're paying for October type thing, so...
Okay.
Yes.
The big roadblock right now with, with the multiple systems is, if you were all tasking, how many people came through our gate last year? I couldn't give you a number. We have a really hard time extracting reporting and, and information, uh, even for budget building. There's, there's, it's really hard to extract information out of it. We're, that's what we're trying to get to, is a little bit accurate, a little more accurate, uh, reporting system as well.
How much do, do you mean, how much we pay for the transaction fees last year?
I believe Local Level, they took two and a half percent of the...
Plus a dollar.
Plus a dollar per transaction. I think Easy Facility, then you paid a credit card company, but I think it was, I wanna say one and a half percent plus like a annual fee to them to have maintained with the credit card company, and that's ninety-five dollars to do that.
Do we have a sense of, as far as capacity, uh, many folks who are tracking, how often we have empty spaces? Because obviously, assuming, let's say, we're at eighty percent, or if we can even come up with those figures, but if we're at eighty, ninety percent capacity, we have little to gain from a new system. Whereas if we're, you know, say, we're only using it for, at forty percent capacity, we potentially have more to gain from a, a new system. Do we have a sense of?
Is, are you speaking of at the campground?
Yeah, the campground.
Camp, we only fill up twice a year at the campground, one for Steam Threshers and one for, um, Fourth of July.
Okay, and then we have a sense that if we spent money on a new system, that there's interest, that people are falling to the cracks that they would be using other times of the year? In other words, we would actually generate more income?
I, I can't promise that it's going to generate more income. I can't say that if we purchase this system, we're going to gain any more, uh, campers by using this system. Internally, it's going to help us bring everything together. Uh, we have had a lot of people asking for online reservations. So, I think it would help the numbers. However, I can't justify on paper or substantiate to you that it's going, it's going to increase those numbers.
We receive complaints because there's no guarantee of a spot. So, we can say there's available out there right now, but maybe Saturday, there's not gonna be. So, they don't come out for that type of thing, you know, because it's a first come, first served.
So, with that system, would they be able to pick their spot online, say, I want that spot?
And that just could be, uh, beyond, uh, what we can do, what we can possibly afford. So, the, the cost to, to dem- demolish the building is probably in the three to five thousand dollar range, dumpsters and getting all the stuff out of there.
With us doing it, isn't it?
With us, our guys doing it. It's not heavily used now. You can use the youth building or the campground facility. I think it's rather unpleasant to use it right now. I don't think it's one of the top spots in the park. So, again, this is our recommendation. We have looked at the cost of maybe building a new one, and it's, it could get, it could get expensive. And there was this theme that we, if we're gonna build something new, it would be nice to have kind of a bigger complex where we have more things under the roof than just the bathroom. But that's a lot of money. So, uh, the question we have to decide tonight, I guess, and Kevin would like us to, to decide on this, is whether they wanna save it, which could be a money pit, and not financially, at least we don't think financially viable or, or demolish it, so...
Do we have other options for bathrooms there currently?
Yes, the youth building, the campground, uh, facility, then there's usually typically the summertime, in spring, porta potties that are in the baseballs and...
Over at the baseball fields, yeah.
Baseball fields. So, there are some other places that are in place, besides those two buildings, youth, park, campground. Yeah, swimming pool, and so it's, uh, in the bathrooms. I saw you. I saw you. You're the one.
If you rent a lot to camp there, do you get admission to the pool? Is that complimentary or?
No. And that's one of the things with the software, that we're trying to get some of those out on sales that while you're there, it could... Would you like to purchase a, a pool pass? It allows you to do that.
Yes, I mean, like, a lot of campgrounds just come with a pool.
Uh, yes, I do. The ours currently does not, for five dollars, it does. So, there are, there is other places, so, tingle. So, that was the recommendation we, we would rent it by you.
The hundred thousand dollars, that is the, the green space park money, could that be used towards a building? Cause it would be nice if you moved it across the midway, do you understand what I'm saying? I'm telling my age, what it very used to be. Move it across the midway, put up... Put up new bleachers, and then maybe have a restroom and the, uh, a kitchen underneath.
I think the same thing, Leslie.
And that's what, the Parks Committee actually discussed that in their, um, in their goals.
Okay.
Uh, and, and master plan, if you will. There's, there's gonna be some significant, uh, repairs needed to the pavilion that sits just south of the restrooms. Repairs needed to the Lions Building, and then obviously these restrooms. So, it's, it's in their, in their mind of wanting to have one master building that is a pavilion, a kitchen that is rentable, and restrooms all in one building, um, across the midway. And, um, their, their thought is, nature works grants just went from yearly to biannually. So, we wouldn't be able to apply for nature works grants till next year. But that's something that they would want to apply for, that grant for, is, is a new building.
Cause I know it would be nice to have more nature space out there.
Mm-hmm.
Can you plan annually to have the festival be put on?
Yes.
You know, it was a great event?
Yes, the fall fest, and we want us to have something large out there, July fourth, too, every year, so...
This fall fest will be again also next year too, or?
Yes, October the twelfth.
Okay.
Yes. So, you know, maybe if we get a kitchen in there, maybe Lions Club would contribute. Maybe Mason's would, or whoever has the chicken barbecue on Memorial Day. Yes, they will. Don't tell me now.
Okay.
So, yeah, so, I think the committee was excited about the possibility of a multi-purpose building at some point down the road if we can get the money and, and make it all happen. But, so we just wanted to make sure that we were all okay with getting rid of the old building and, and getting something new at some point, so... So, are we okay with that? Sure, I move to that we authorize the village to demolish the old restroom facility in Pastime Park.
There's an appropriation issue.
No, not demolish it, isn't it. You have appropriations. To purchase a new software, you did not have it. You could not amend a temporary budget, but to, it's just payroll correct.
No, the three to five thousand dollars would be for dumpster, dumpster and tip fees.
Eight thousand appropriated them.
Right.
Not necessarily for that, but through the, the entire year. You just have to go back and reappropriate.
I would reappropriate for additional things.
Between now and declaring to our final budget for fourteen?
And just one other, I'm sorry to ask so many questions, but, um, is it functional at all to some level, some degree?
The sinks work, right?
Uh, we, we closed and locked the doors, um, probably about a month toward the end of the, uh, the season last year. We had some sanitary pipe issues. We borrowed a, um, sewer camera from the state, camered the, the lines and... It was inconclusive of, you know, I was hoping to find or expecting to find a collapsed pipe or, or a block somewhere, and we didn't find that. So, I think through just a bunch of small cracks and whatnot. I think through just a bunch of small cracks and whatnot that.
So I mean, it's not, but it is spring.
No. We have significant wastewater seeping into the soil rather than going through the pipe.
So we have a second. Are we good? Any more questions? Ms. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Kizer?
Yes.
Mr. Kennedy?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Ms. Perkins?
Yes.
Mr. Walter?
Yes.
And finally, the last item I sent an email to you all today just about the issue we talked about last time about perhaps thinking about some kind of ordinance that would prohibit people from erecting things or bringing in foreign objects or foreign items and putting them on display with on the park. So I hope you had a chance to look at that. I don't think it's something we have to rush into. But I didn't want to just read it out loud so that you could kind of hear what I was thinking, and I'd looked at a few other various parks from around the country and what they had on on the books, and this is kind of the consensus is that we would we would say something like, no person shall without the consent of Plain City Village Council construct any structure, wall, monument, fence, drive, walk, permanent seating, steps, or path on park park property, or deposit plants, trees on park property, or use, or maintain park property as an extension of private property. So just something to think on, and I asked Mr. Lafayette to kind of begin thinking about how we could package that and what the punishment would be. I would I think Chief mentioned something about a misdemeanor. I don't know how that all works, but take it a little offense, I guess, if it's posted. So that's kind of a wrap on that. We can we can have Mr. Lafayette kind of chew on that a little bit, or we could talk about it a little bit tonight, or. Does that seem likely? I thought we tried to at least in that pretty much every possibility that any person could could do, but.
Would a chair during the fireworks be a personal property issue?
No, it's permanent seating, and I think the last phrase says that you're not to basically make part of the parkland your own. Like basically start mowing your grass into the parkland and put your shed in the park because you've mowed the land for so long. So I think the word permanent would.
Besides, during the Fourth of July, the Plain City Village would obviously give you permission to do so, right? It's part of part of the event. My only question is why do we limit this to park property? Why not village property?
Yeah, maybe we could just make it to. You guys, Mr. Kennedy was saying we just we could make it just village property and cover everything. I guess if somebody wanted to put something on the grass right here, I guess we'll cover that as well. That'd be fun.
Yeah, I mean, there's a way to draft it that would be, I think, would satisfy what you're what you're going after.
The last statement works is is if it was for personal property, the person could say, well, I did it for the village. We want to make sure we don't leave ourselves open there.
Ramifications. Are there fines, or is it just payable ticket, or? Who enforces?
Well, I would put it in the same category as trespassing in the park at night or littering in the park. I mean, I think those are.
Yeah, it becomes a criminal offense, police enforcement.
And they forfeit the materials that they use to put up or whatever they put up. And when you're not storing a fence board for a year, then they come back in and put back up again.
So what's council's pleasure with this? Are you interested in moving forward with this?
Yeah, I think it's a great idea. I think it's something that we needed a long ago.
Okay, so then shall we direct Mr. Lafayette to conduct a draft?
I will circulate a draft. Obviously, after I circulate a draft, we'll deliberate on it in the public session, but certainly I'll put it out there so everybody can take a look at it.
That's all, here.
Thank you. All right. Mr. Walter, personnel finances.
Trying to make this quick. We have a personnel finance meeting this evening at six o'clock. The purpose really was to take to do a review of the two thousand thirteen budget versus actual experience. So it was really two thousand thirteen in review. We also used it as a comparison to what our current preliminary appropriations are for two thousand fourteen. We have a a rough planning calendar that we're putting together for the Personnel Finance Committee. One of the first items, and we would ask Sean if he would be kind enough to to schedule this. This would be a work session for council dedicated to a a more thorough review of two thousand thirteen actuals and the two thousand fourteen budget. And we'd we'd used not only the government accounting tools, but we'd also used the the Excel spreadsheets that Personnel Finance used tonight. Following that, we would be looking at working on the final appropriations for two thousand fourteen before the end of March. A multi-year capital improvement plan, have that get that started this spring and have it complete and ready by June first. That would be a predecessor to the two thousand fifteen budgeting process with a goal of having the two thousand fifteen budget ready for. And have taken it through council review and approval in the October, November timeframe. So so that's the financial planning calendar for the year. But the first thing is, John, if you could set a date. That's that's really all I have.
Prior to the new year, when we took work sessions, council was starting to be there twenty for those sessions. Should we assume this is a paid session?
Well, this how long we this more of a, you think you had a retreat a while ago? Do you think this would be more than just a normal, is this something we really want to dig into? Or, you know, last maybe it was two years ago, we had a retreat or something?
It did.
It was a little bit bigger than a, is this something you'd see as a normal work session type thing?
I see it as a normal work session type like.
Yeah, okay. All right.
And if it's going to be paid, I think that, you know, that that why I think that the discussion will need to come up again is the frequency. You start doing it, wanting to do it on a regular basis again, then I think we need to, we'll have to have that discussion. It's probably if you're all agree with that.
I think it's fine. So would you want to just reschedule through email, or do you want to look at our calendars now, or you just want?
Is there one night during the week that's better than another for all of you, or is it an idea? It used to be on a Tuesday night. Is Tuesday night workable? Is it a flex for you?
Yeah, it's fine.
Okay, so we can look at Tuesday email.
Would you, you want it soon, February eleventh? Does the eleventh work for? Man, would that be okay for you?
That's just a suggestion.
That's good for me.
I didn't see it in my plan on my calendar.
February eleventh?
Do we have council meeting on the tenth?
We would.
Anybody want to stagger it?
To the fourth or the eighteenth? I could do the eighteenth. Does the eighteenth work? Yeah, eighteenth, okay. Do we normally use six or seven?
Well, we do personnel finance at six tonight. Was that? Uh, six is great.
Jimmy, can you make six? Six o'clock on the eighteenth for a work session?
Is this something you'd want to get done before final budget?
No, it's Tuesday.
Tuesday?
To save on time.
Eight? Eighteenth.
Eighteenth?
Hold on there, we're we're checking on that budget.
This is really to bring our new council members into a real in-depth understanding. We had several guest council members sit and observe personnel finance, but they did not participate tonight. I see it as kind of a predecessor to us actually getting in and starting to work on the final appropriations for two thousand fourteen. They need to be finished by the thirty-first of March. Ideally, we wouldn't want to rush it through as an emergency. So if you back that off, probably the earlier that we have this this work session, the better. Because shortly after that, Personnel Finance is going to have to start sharpening its pencil and coming back with recommendations.
So you're saying the fourth would be better?
I'm thinking the fourth.
That's fine with me.
Six P M.
Yep. Okay.
Okay, so we'll hear on the fourth.
Thank you. Paul, was that all from your?
Pardon me?
Was that all from your report as well?
That's all, and I'll the the worksheets that were shared with Personnel Finance, I'll email to the balance of council tomorrow. So you'll have those.
Okay, thank you. Jimmy, anything new prior?
Next, if not.
All right, Op, anything on Upco?
No, I want to congratulate Joe Rucker though, he's the new president of Upco. I did a comment on design review board. We did our orientation session. And Monday, the third is the first quarterly design review board meeting. And that's at six o'clock here. I'm not sure if there's any pending applications. I'll probably contact John Jordan. And I will probably sit in the audience and assist the board with their first organizational meeting as they get ready to move forward.
Great, thank you. All right, moving into pending items.
All righty. We talked about the golf carts and kind of kicked it around for the last six months or so. Chief brought it to council attention I think last fall. In two thousand seventeen, the Ohio Revised Code is going to have a change which, and I sent everyone a memo regarding this. There's going to be a change in two thousand seventeen in which the Revised Code is going to define, provide a definition for underspeed vehicles, which will include golf carts, and under the new law, it will permit golf carts on any roads or public thoroughfares that are thirty-five miles per hour or less. And there's also various inspection and registration requirements. The issue, granted it's a few years down the road, the issue for council to consider, I guess, at this point is that if we don't do anything prior to two thousand seventeen, if we don't, and I should back up a step. As far as the the changes that are coming up in two thousand seventeen, the village or any municipality has its own, has the authority to impose more restrictive requirements. Thus, we could set it for ten miles per hour streets or whatever. We could set our own regulations on that. However, if we don't do it prior to January first, two thousand seventeen, then the default essentially will be the Ohio Revised Code. And golf carts that are properly registered and inspected under the statute will be able to travel on thirty-five mile per hour streets, which would be the main, you know, Main Street, Jefferson, and Chil- Chillicothe. So the chief had raised some obviously valid issues with regard to safety and traffic. One of the suggestions that the the chief had brought up was, and again, we can we can outright restrict and prohibit them from any public streets if we wanted to. I mean, that's one of the other alternatives that is also a, you know, a further restriction under their code that's permissible. So council has a couple of issues kind of to decide on how to move forward at this point. Number one, do you want to, start, would you want to do the legislation now or begin the process of doing the legislation now prior to the two thousand seventeen amendments that are coming up? Do you want to impose further restrictions or full completely restrict the use of golf golf carts, essentially prohibiting them from public streets? And if you're going to have further restrictions and not prohibit them, what other restrictions are you going to have? Twenty-five mile an hour per per hour streets or less and things of that nature. You know, and we also have issues with golf carts that cross over thirty-five mile per hour streets, which it it, let's say we have a twenty-five, let's say the council were to impose a twenty-five mile per hour or less restriction on a golf cart in order for them to be used as number streets versus thirty-five miles per hour where they'd be kind of boxed in. If they wanted to go up to the park, which I suspect anyone who has a golf cart is wanting, is going to want to be able to access the park during steam threshers here Fourth of July, and we'd probably want to have a provision in there that would provide them to cross over a thirty-five mile per hour road, subject to, you know, safety, you know, you know, we can put language into that effect that requires them to proceed safely, et cetera. The other issue is, under the changes that are coming up, if we chose to impose our own restrictions, there are options as to inspections of the vehicles. Basically, the municipality itself would be responsible for conducting the inspections of these vehicles, which would be added burden on the police department and, you know, there's a couple of different ways to go. I spoke with the Massacre County Sheriff's Office, and they've indicated that they are conducting inspections on golf carts and those types of vehicles right now. And they would be willing to do that if they would help us out, which is obviously a good option. Takes away any kind of administrative kind of headache from the police department. However, if the police department wanted to do it, we could set it up and arrange it for times to be designated that the first Friday of every month, if you want to get your golf cart inspected or whatever, you come down first Friday of the month between nine and eleven A M. We'll inspect it for a fee or whatever. So there's another number of options in that regard. So those are those are kind of the broader issues to throw out there, and I'm not sure exactly what council's pleasure is at this point, but I'm kind of throwing it out there for deliberation on what your thoughts are. Obviously, Chief, you want to add, or is there something else you want to add to the topic?
We can have it during certain times to, I think, to have it during only during the summertime or.
Yeah, I mean, basically, the way the Revised Code is, the way that the, I say proposed legislation, it's already been passed, but it just doesn't take effect until two thousand seventeen, is that, let me see. Nothing in this section shall prevent a local authority from adopting more stringent stringent local ordinances, resolutions, or regulations governing the operation of low-speed vehicle or a mini truck, motor vehicle, motorcycle, et cetera. So pretty much any type of restriction that we want to impose, we can, if you want to only have it during daylight hours during the summer, that's something certainly council would do.
What's the minimum age?
Um.
You have to be licensed.
You have to be licensed, right? Yes, because it has to be, once it's inspected, registered, then it has to.
So a regular driver's license.
You would have to carry insurance, just like a vehicle, any other motor vehicle.
So what's your thoughts, Chief? What do you?
My biggest concern when I first heard, you know, that was going to be pretty much open for underspeed vehicles and low-speed vehicles is vehicles traveling on U S Route forty-two, so or one sixty-one, and, you know, there's a lot of traffic, heavy traffic. So I would just hate to see, I mean, accidents are bad enough when there's a rear end with a car versus a car, but we're talking about a golf cart. I I I would be concerned. That's my biggest issue. Other than the other restrictions that council would want to place, I I don't really see. There's nothing that really strikes out to me as as something that has to be done. I would just would really think it's appropriate for them not to be on a thirty-five mile per hour roadway, stay on residential roads. But obviously, hopefully, you know, sometimes you have to make common sense because common sense isn't always common. So, you know, for like you're saying, in the wintertime, you know, I didn't, that didn't even.
Tonight.
Yeah, yeah, I don't want them out, you know, on icy roads or anything else. So, yeah, I mean, maybe seasonal types of, set it up for, you know, the daytime hours makes sense for safety purposes, but they do have to be equipped with headlights and windshield wipers, turn signals. So, I mean, there's the inspections, pretty much they have to have everything that another motor vehicle would have on it.
Am I the only one who thinks of beer, the one who thinks of a golf cart?
Yeah, open containers would still not be good.
So I think what you want to decide is, do you want to do something prior to twenty seventeen? And if you do, then then you have to figure out how restricted. Is there something you think? It's the guys working there.
It's a road, a road's overlaid, so when they cut the road, then they have to get to the second road underneath that. So that's what they're doing, scraping on that overlay.
Okay, so, um...
I think we need to get something done because there's several people in town that wants to be able to park and...
I do think that is the first decision. Do you want to have, allow them or not?
I see Oak Grove as the future of Plain City. I don't know if I'm alone there, but this is where our increase of revenue is going to come, so we don't have those tough decisions that we had last year. And going forward, we have the money to do what we need to do. And so my first thought is, to the folks that are buying three hundred thousand dollar homes, are golf carts an attractive thing? You know, if you want to go from my house to the park, I mean, I don't need a golf cart to do that. So a concern Jim wouldn't be whether someone can get to the park or not. Our alternative means to do that is what's best for attracting the new folks into two hundred and some homes that hopefully get built. Is that a lifestyle?
I don't think we're going to be overrun, or I don't think we're going to turn into a bay where we don't...
Five hundred golf carts...
Well, you don't know. You don't know. We certainly may not, but...
That's true, that's true.
And we can't put the restriction five hundred over.
That's true.
Restart the Ollish five hundred.
Love the idea, chief.
If you're pulled by a horse, I think they're different. So anyhow, seriously though.
I guess my thoughts would be, I'm, I'm okay with the idea. I guess America, we can do what we want, as long as we don't hurt others or cause problems. So I guess my parameters would probably be, as long as it's a twenty-five mile an hour street, it's a possibility of crossing, you know, one sixty-one or safely crossing, but just at a ninety degree, right? So not at a, kind of merging with traffic, but at a ninety degree or something like that. So that you can get from this side of town to the park, but you're not going up and down one sixty-one.
We used to have horses in town, lots of them, and it didn't seem to be a problem.
Yeah.
I think cars are slower.
They don't remember the horses in town.
So that's, that's where I'm thinking. So I, I guess I'm okay with it. I like the idea. People have them, they go to the park, it's nice. Uh, I guess I haven't thought about the day or night thing, or seasonal as much. But I'm okay with crossing the bigger streets when the light permits only at ninety degrees, you know, not doing anything else.
So go ahead, Op.
I think the village has far more important things to spend its time with and have our solicitor research and our police chief answer questions and council to debate than golf carts.
I guess we just need to wait to see what the Ohio ord- what the ordinance is going to come out in seventeen.
It's already...
It's permitting that.
It goes in the fact, so if you don't do anything, they're going to be able to travel.
Right, understand that, but is that, everything on there okay? Do we need to add to it?
They're at thirty-five miles... Thirty-five miles an hour, you want.
So if you're okay waiting, we have a couple of years to sort out the details. We can wait, bring it up in a year or two and sort out the details. Or if you want to go ahead and put it into effect now, but with your stringent guidelines, that's fine too. But we, I'd like to know your, what you prefer moving forward right now, so we can get beyond this.
I think whatever she wants is what you can find with me.
It's your call, chief.
I can't be expert on what can be and what can't be.
Right now, if you ride a golf cart through town, what happens to you?
Uh, it's not permissible. They're not permissible on roadways right now. But this law in two thousand seventeen will allow them the avenue with the inspections and being registered.
Does this also go for like the John Deere Gators too, or?
Those are the spot, there'd be a definition as under speed and low speed vehicles. So everything's going to be, there's no definition for a golf cart in the O R C right now to be on the roadway. So in two thousand seventeen, they've corrected all that and they've made under speed vehicles and low speed vehicles. And they define what they are and what their speeds are and what the manufacturing is.
Okay.
Right now, we, so right now, they can't, you know, the roads.
No, they're not permissible.
And we have until two thousand seventeen.
Unless you make an ordinance that permits them.
We have other things that are much more important.
We do, but we'll always have other things that are more important. I mean, this clearly will never be the most important issue in front of us ever.
Well, the, the point to me is, it's, citizens have brought it to us, and to me, it's an issue of freedom. Uh, they would like this, they've come to us as the duly elected body, and they would be requesting that we do this for them. And I can't, and it's coming, there's the folks that came last year who asked us to look into it.
Two or three people asked me when we're going to do something about it.
And while it isn't the most...
Wait two more years, they probably won't even be here.
I think you're suggesting a hearse for the golf cart. So I, I mean, I totally agree, but I, at some point, um, not everything can be, you know, eighty million dollar housing development that we deal with. And so I believe we've been requested by some citizens. And I guess it just comes down to what can you do in this country? And if it's not hurting anyone. And it gets them to the park, and so I guess that before.
So we're back to, would you like?
Why don't we table for a year? We can think about it for a year, and we will come back and revisit this next...
We've already tabled it for a year now.
A little sticky on the calendar. I brought this up six months ago, so, been tabled and even before the Sisler got here.
So Mr. Kennedy motioned for a second...
To table it for a year.
To table for one year, be brought back up in January of two thousand fifteen. Ms. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Kizer?
No.
Mr. Kennedy?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
No.
Ms. Perkins?
Yes.
Mr. Walter?
Yes.
How am I going to get home tonight?
You're on two feet.
I'll take you, I'll put on my golf cart.
Can the chief stop him?
All right, I'm going to, um, we have a couple individuals that have appeared that would like to speak to council.
Put on that.
Mr. Walter, why, why didn't you get a tap?
Well, back then, um, if you were within, uh, I think it was two hundred and fifty feet from the, from the main sewer, you could, you were required to tap in. I was like two hundred and seventy feet, so I didn't get a tap. They probably didn't want to spend the money to, to give me a tap to my property line. So that's the reason I didn't get a tap. So my leach bed's failing, it's fifty-seven years old. I can repair it, but I'd just assume, you know, tap into the village, pay the extra sewer fee and so forth, but, uh...
And those that got the taps before?
Pardon me?
Those that got the taps before?
Were free, yeah, yeah. It was all included in the grant, yeah. So, um, that's what I'm up here for, and Mike George knows quite a bit about it.
Yeah, I'd just like to support Jim. You know, his business has been here for over half a century, you know, it's a long time. And back when, as he mentioned, when everyone in town got a free tap, all the houses in the older part of town, all the businesses up and down Main Street got a free tap, he didn't get one because, um, that business out there was built by some local businessmen back in fifty...
Fifty-seven.
In nineteen fifty-seven. And it was kind of built on an island, and there was no sewer line out there. There still isn't one very close. The option is to bore under forty-two into the sewer line that we put in when we built the Shell Station, or go two hundred and seventy feet to the sewer line that comes along the Sweeney Run. So, um, I feel like he, council, um, at this point, just needs to consider that this is an existing business that needs some help, that didn't get what all the other businesses got in town, uh, forty years ago, or whatever, whatever the number is. And I, and I, I would just encourage you to support, uh, local business that is having a run-in with the E P A, which, and we all know what that's like. And, uh, just think about that. I know we consider giving breaks to new businesses when they might be headed to town. And I just think, uh, consider an existing business, um, that's been in this community a long time, has provided a lot of jobs, a lot of entertainment, a lot of tax dollars in half a century, and, uh, is going to be facing, uh, an enormous expense to run a sewer line, two hundred and seventy feet over Sweeney Run. It's going to be for, far more than the tap fee that he is looking at, which will be an additional expense. He's going to have to pay the money anyway. He's probably looking at, I would estimate, ten or twelve thousand dollars to run that line. So it's just my two cents. Thank you.
Any questions?
Currently, what's a tap fee?
He would only need sewer, he's already got water, so it's approximately eighty-four hundred dollars.
What's our cost to hook it up, for lack of a better term?
They have to hook it up. Their contract.
There's no cost to the village. It's all just a tap fee. I mean, I have to incur the, the total costs as far as running the line and tapping into the sewer. I mean, there's no cost, added cost to the village.
So when you had the option before, why, I'm sorry, why did you not do it then?
Uh, well, back then, I, I would have had to run it to the sewer line, okay?
Okay.
Back then, if you was farther than two hundred and fifty feet, they would run it to you. So that was the reason I didn't, I didn't get a tap. So, you know, I was like fifteen feet short, so, but I had an existing leach bed that was working properly. Now, you know, it's fifty-seven years, years old, leach beds, and so it needs some, it needs repaired. I mean, I could fix it cheaper than that than what it would cost me to tap in, but, you know, I'm just looking, you know, in the future. I plan on my kids taking my, my business over, and that'd just be one problem that will be solved in the future, so. And plus, you'd get the added, uh, revenue as far as the sewer, uh, expense that I haven't been paying in all these years, but, uh... Just looking at, you know, dollars, it's a business.
I understand.
Either forty-two or Sweeney.
So it'd be city line, private? You tap into a city line?
Yes.
And how long does your leach bed then last?
Hmm, it's just, it's just about six months ago. The last, we had just tremendous rain about a month ago, if you recall. Yeah, I had a little bit of spill over, so, uh... I got a ni- nice letter from E P A. They gave you sixty days to come up with a solution, and then they're going to give you a little more time to solve the problem. So that's what I'm looking at.
I think the private businesses in the village are on their private sewer.
I don't know, I don't know what the number is.
I think we want to go ahead and give it to them.
I think that opens a ton of worms. I am one, because when we had our house fire in eighty-seven, we were on a leach bed then. And the house could have been put onto city water and sewer. Who knows when, but they didn't do it because we were surrounded. And when we had the fire in eighty-seven, the city said we had to hook up, and we spent five thousand dollars for our tap fees. We didn't have that option, it'd been a grand blurred house. Now, granted, we're a house, we're not a business, but still, how many other businesses are going to come and say, oh, we could have done this a long time ago, but we didn't. Now we have a problem.
I don't think there's another business in town that's in my position. As far as, uh...
Well, there are other businesses that are still in septic, is that correct, Kevin?
I'm sorry?
There are other businesses in town that are still in septic?
There are a few, I don't have the exact number.
Okay, so they could potentially, eventually their leach bed will go bad, won't it? They do go bad. It could happen.
Could happen, yes.
So this could come up again?
Very possible.
Well, I'll be glad to tap in if you run a line to my property. And pay the tap fee.
But aren't you surrounded by private property?
Well, I mean, if you want to run a tap to my property, I'll be glad to tap in and pay the tap fee. See, they ran a line to your property and you paid the tap fee, which was five thousand dollars, so...
Well, it seems to me that it's, it's hard to get businesses to come and, and make it in Plain City. And as Mr. George said, we, we often do things to create incentives for them to come, but what do we do to keep some of the staple businesses here that, you know, I would imagine Plain City lanes brings in folks from outside of Plain City all the time, the school wire work, constantly doing field trips there, bringing people into the village.
I've got a lot of people come to Plain City lanes and moved to Plain City because of, you know, because of Plain City. Do a tremendous amount of business from Dublin, Hager, and so forth. It's a bit of a trashing.
We've offered...
I coach a bowling team, we've got one of the best bowling teams in the state of Ohio. I mean, it's, uh...
We've offered incentives, and that's one of the ways that we brought in the final eighteen homes for Copperfield and same incentives working for Oak Grove. I would hesitate to afford the same courtesy to Mr. Walter. And that was a ten percent discount on the tap fee. On the other hand, we've just passed an ordinance to establish a ten dollar per month surcharge because our water capital fund is empty. The tap fees go to the water capital fund. So if we, I understand the, the situation, I sympathize with it, but how do we justify waiving a tap fee and then, at the same time, hitting every resident and asking them for the surcharge that we've had to ask for? That, it, it's a real dilemma. But, but to afford them the same courtesy that we have a developer coming into town would be my recommendation.
But was Press Works to hide their...
I don't think they finalized that yet, have they, Kevin?
You...
What did Press Works do?
They were built.
They were built?
Yes.
Full amount?
Full amount. Less the ten percent.
So they got the ten percent?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so, so it's the same situation as, as afforded to Press Works, so, um...
Sorry about the building that burned, and then they're going to a new location?
Yes, they're using a, a building to the rear of their property. And they needed to make a...
They need to add a tap.
That's what you're trying to say, correct?
They added a tap.
Had they reposed on the same location?
They needed another, they needed another tap.
They needed to, yes.
And the location that they're, that burned down still has a tap, and they can sell it, and it has a value which has increased because it has a tap on it. So that they purchased a tap, but they still have an old tap that has, it's like a liquor license, for example. They can still sell that property, it has an increased value because the tap fee is already paid. So there would be no reason why we would give the bindery a free tap. That's not the same as what Mr. Walter is asking for here, in my opinion. It's different than the, than the binder.
Would you say there's ten businesses in town that...
I would, I would think one or two.
One or two. See, in my mind, I think we should do all we can do to keep the businesses that are here, here. I think this is, if you can, if you can carve out a niche and do business in, in this town, I've seen s- in the, you know, seven or eight years I've been here, businesses have come, businesses have gone. Storefronts have come, storefronts have gone. And if we can do anything to keep them here and help, you know, and if, especially since there's only a few that are on, would be into this. So I'm inclined to support. Jim, did you make a motion, or did you...
I didn't make a motion. Well, the issue is equal treatment as government. Right, so the question is, what precedent do we set? If the issue that we're, we're painting it as a matter of grandfather, because he didn't have that opportunity in nineteen, whenever it was, then what precedent do we set? If that's how we, we phrase it, and that's how we pass it, if it were to be passed, what kind of equal protection or equal treatment issue are we opening ourselves up? What kind of equal protection or equal treatment issue are we opening ourselves up to? If there are but one or two other businesses that possibly fall under that precedent and are concerned from a liability or, you know, whatever we're setting ourselves up for is very small. If you frame it another way, oh, we're just giving a business a discount, then our liability or our possible exposure is very large. I mean, I see it, I think, as Sean does, in the sense that if we look to grandfather him in there, we don't really set much of a precedent going forward that we would have to do this for anybody else. A new business coming in, well, the bowling alley got that, well, that's different because what we did was because he didn't have the option because of fifteen feet back in, you know, twenty years.
He was out, he was out of limits. He was too far for the city to run to him.
No, I think they would've, but he didn't have to. Is that correct? They would've given you sewer.
If they would've ran, if they would've ran a line on my property, I would've tapped in, okay? So I didn't, as far as me requesting that option? I, I didn't, but maybe I could've, I don't know. But I feel, I've, I've talked with some legal counsel, and they feel like I've got a legitimate case on, on the grandfather clause. I don't know what other businesses are in town that's, does, that's still on a leach bed. They sure wouldn't be two hundred and fifty feet away from the existing sewer line that I'd have to, you know, incur the cost just to go to the line, and then I'd have to incur the cost for the tap fee, so.
Well, this kinda brings to mind what we were talking earlier about bringing things up to. I mean, I can't imagine we want businesses in town still using a leach bed inside the village limits. I mean, if they ever come to us, we would do whatever we could to get them in, into the modern system, so we don't have this problem. I can't imagine it's very pleasant. And so it can't be good for business, and if there're only a few of them, then I think we need to do what we can do to get, get people into the, into the system.
But as I was saying, if that's why we do it, then we set a very dangerous precedent. Oh, I'm gonna build a business here, and I'm gonna use a leach system. Well, oh, never mind, you've got.
You can't do that.
But you know what, you know what I mean, we don't wanna do it for that reason, I think, because.
Well, I would think you would, you would wanna do it. There's gotta be a small amount. It can't be healthy and sanitary.
If there's a sewer line, if it's available, they have to tap in.
Okay, so there are, you're saying that some businesses.
Well, if you're in, if you're in the village limits, you have to tap in.
If you're for a new bill, for a new bill. But the ones that are the older businesses, whether, how many there are, five, six, who knows?
I don't think there are that many.
It can't be that, it can't be sanitary.
No, there's not that many. I don't even know how many, very few. I, I'm the only one that I know of, as far as I know.
Great, Council. It is a hard place. It's a difficult decision.
Mr. Lafayette, what do you think about the idea of liability? If we do this with, if we do for this, and the mills might come forward?
We'd love to have more time to think about it, but I'll tell you that certainly my concerns, and again, I empathize with the situation, and frankly, I love pizza. I gotta get it ready early, but I do have concerns about an equal protection problem. That being said, you know, I would have to, I would have to kinda crunch some of the factors, and frankly, that's what I was just starting to do, I scribbled down on a notepad as far as how the situation is unique as opposed to how it would be similar to every other business in town, and so that we don't run amok and create a problem. You know, the equal protection, I mean, the government must treat all of its citizens and all, and every citizen, a business is a citizen. Have to treat everybody equally. So, you know, the incentive, I think, is appropriate because we've done that before. Whether or not there's enough distinguishing characteristics under these, these particular facts, I think I'd have to know a little bit more of the facts of it before I'd feel comfortable saying, yeah, it's okay, or no, it isn't. Yeah, I don't think it would take me a terrible, long time to do that, but I would need to really consider it. I mean, that's, that's, you know, from, again, that's my legal opinion. You guys make policy decisions, but from a legal standpoint, my concern is that there would be an equal protection problem to the, to the extent of any businesses that come forward in the future and say, hey, we'd like that deal too. And we say, no, well, we did it for him. And so, again, if there's enough to distinguish the Lanes' position or Mr. Walter's position, then it wouldn't be something similar that would be encountered. And if his situation is unique enough, then it may very well be okay if council, so choose to do that.
I would be interested if you can qualify it as a unique situation. But, but I'd need to know what your recommendation is. But I wanna raise one other, and I know it's a little bit off target, but is Dorvik Drive on an alternative waste treatment system, or are they on leach beds?
Subjective.
Okay, so it's an island within the village. Dorvik Drive's been there for twenty-five years, so they start to go bad, and, and the EPA says, well, you gotta tap in, but they're not in the village, and so, so we have a number of homes coming out with a similar situation. So there's, there's issues that could come out someday, and I just wanna caution that, you know, those, those landmines are there.
What kind of timeframe are you on?
Pardon me?
What kind of timeframe are you on?
Think about West Avenue.
With the E.P.A.?
Yeah, way over to Plain City Lafayette.
I would say fifty days from now, respond. I mean, I, like I said, I do have an option, I can just fix my leach bed. But I'd rather not, if I'd tap in the village, but it'd be cheaper on my, you know, a lot cheaper to fix my leach bed, but.
So.
This little island you were talking about, it's, it's part of the village?
No, it's, it's, it's township, and.
Between the shower station and then.
Right, but the bowling alley is currently in the village.
Oh, yeah, it's been a village.
So that's the.
They're an island.
But, but, but the point I'm bringing up is that the Madison County requirements are, if you have an alternative system and you have issues, I don't know that it's grandfatherable. I think you, their, their, their goal was to force you onto central services, and that may come someday, and that's not gonna be one situation, that's gonna be multiple situations.
But the difference there is that they'll have to annex into the village.
Yeah.
You know, and it's not a business that's been in the village for fifty years. It's people that are just arriving.
Right, there's some, like I said, it wasn't exactly the same, and if, if we can define the bowling alley, if it can be defined as a unique situation, I'd be interested in hearing how.
Do you think we could get some of those answers by the next council?
Yeah, yeah, I mean, I'll have to, you know, obviously, I don't have the history as well as everybody else around here, but certainly, I've talked to Bob and Kevin, and Mr. Walter may contact you as well just to get some details or have you provide some details, Mr. Vaughn, so I can get together an analysis for council.
I'd be interested in knowing how many businesses are still in that old, if that's even possible to find out.
We can try to determine that, I'm.
I guess it's by process of elimination. Who doesn't pay?
You know, there was another option we were looking at, and that was, I do have a six-inch line that's Hoosiers, within twenty feet of my line. And it would totally handle the capacity if I tapped in his six-inch line, you know. I know there's an ordinance on the books that you can't tap into a private line, but, I mean, that's, that's an option I have. Have to pay to tap into his line, but if the villagers would go along with that, I could, you know, like I said, it's twenty feet away from my line. There's a six-inch line, there's only small usage on the line as far as everybody's on minimum water.
And I recall this came up the last, was there a P and Z?
Yeah.
That P and Z we discussed, and as I recall, that, that option is a sort of definitive no. I mean, it's on the books where it says you can't have tapping into private lines unless, and there is a codicil to that, it said unless EPA approved. So if you got EPA approval, the way the legislation is drafted right now, again, I'd probably have to take a closer look at it, but the way it's drafted right now, if EPA approved it, you could do it.
So if EPA approved it, you, would you guys go along with that? I mean, that's, that would be the simplest. It's, like I said, it's only twenty feet. I measured twenty feet from my line, and actually, there was a, when he put that line in, he put a tap there in case I wanted to tap in. But, of course, he's gonna charge me, but it'd be cheaper in the village.
What you're saying, Mr. Lafayette, is if the EPA is fine with it, then there's not our decision right here.
Right, let me.
That trumps any ordinance that we might have applied.
Private sanitary sewer lines under nine twenty-five oh three H. Private as opposed to public sanitary sewers cannot be owned by owners now owning the same until such time the owner can also mutually agree to transfer of ownership to the village. Such sewers shall be controlled by the village and shall be operated and maintained by their owners unless the village agrees in writing to provide the service, in which case a properiesman would be dedicated to the village. Reading kind of the wrong one, sort of, yeah. Well, that's the combined. So, so if Hoosier were to, Mr. Hoosier were to dedicate his line over to the village and provide an easement for it, then it becomes a public line, and then he can do it. Now, under nine twenty-five oh three, it says combined sewers. The construction or extension of combined, of combined sewers is hereby prohibited unless approved by O.E.P.A. So I guess my question for Kevin is, is the way that this is drafted, if Kevin knows the answer to it, is the construction or extension to combine, combined sewers is hereby prohibited. Not having all the background on it, I'm kinda looking at it right now for the, I guess, the second time, really. But when we're talking about combined sewers, are we talking about combining private lines?
I'm not sure.
I know, I know the answer to this one. A combined sewer is a storm sewer, sanitary sewer combination.
Okay, so that's completely different, so. Then my previous statement about if you had EPA approval is not correct. So, so basically, it is prohibited. Unless Mr. Hoosier were to dedicate the line to the village and we get an easement for it.
And we would have some concerns with that. If he could provide us as-bilts that are built to our specifications of, of a public sanitary line, but without knowing how that's constructed, is concerning. If he could provide as-bilts and, and they're built in our accordance, then that's up to you, but that would be one issue that I would have.
It doesn't negate the tap fee, though.
Right.
But it cuts his cost as far as the, it'd save him about ten thousand.
So are you good to wait till our next meeting?
Pardon me?
Are you good to wait till our next meeting?
Yeah, I'll, I'll wait till another council meeting. Any way you look at it, you know, I'm requesting to waive the tap fee. Even if I tapped into Hoosier's line, you still would charge me the tap fee, okay? But the simplest way to do it is run a line all the way to Sweeney Run, that I would, it's gonna cost me to run that line over two hundred and fifty feet. Like I say, the business's been there since nineteen fifty-seven, I should be grandfathered in. I should've got a tap fee back then. I'm gonna have to foot the cost to run the line, so.
I think that, I think council in some way would like to help you. Whatever, I'm not sure what that means, but we're trying, we're trying to, so. Mr. Lafayette's going to go back and, and just make sure that how we, how it's handled is appropriate, and he'll have a decision for us, and that our next meeting is on the third.
I would like to say, concerning the tap fee, that's twenty feet from us, Mr. Faust, owns, you know, Faust Plumbing and Heating, he, he just tapped into one of those taps, and apparently was appropriate or well enough for him to tap in.
There were three taps available.
So, I mean, we should, we're tapping into basically the same type of lines, 'cause they all were put on sixty years ago.
I think this was a water line.
Oh, those are all new lines. Those, that's all new lines.
Well, he tapped into one of those taps.
Right, right, right.
I mean, he tapped in, when, when that front building burned down, I think the three taps became available, and she tapped into one of them, so there's a couple left.
Didn't he pay for those?
Yeah, but my, my point is, yeah, he did, he might've paid for it, but.
Didn't pay for it.
But it, but it was adequate. And that was Mr. Vaughn's concern, that would it be adequate for us? It must've been adequate for, for Mr. Faust.
That's, 'cause it's still his private line. If we assumed the, the responsibility of that pipe from then on, I would need to know that it's adequately installed. It's still his private line, so if it's not adequately installed and it fails, then it's still on him and not on us.
Okay, that makes sense, yeah.
Was that a water line though, or sewer line?
It was a sanitary line. He had taps from the building that burned and used that tap, is that correct?
Oh, we need to get our facts together before we.
I think one thing that, just something to think about, you know, when this was done, and you had the opportunity to do it before, right, there was no cost involved to the business owner?
No, no cost.
So at that point, the government entity said, these are the qualified factors for you to get at, at no cost.
Right.
And so they weren't worried about the equal protection clause. They set some standards for businesses to bring them up.
But they had to bring it, correct?
Yeah, but if we're talking about a government decision based on equal protection, we could say the same thing today. We're trying to do the exact same thing that they tried to do forty years ago, which is look at the businesses that are still in leach beds and bring them up and offer the same incentive, whether it's three or four businesses, it's still the same program that they did. And they didn't seem to be violating the constitutional equal protection laws of it, because they were doing these very specific parameters with these businesses then, at which time you, various reasons, didn't take advantage of that program. What you're asking for us to do is to reinstate that program now for the remaining businesses of which you are one. That's the way I'm seeing it.
But also, had he tapped in way back then, we would've been receiving sewer payments all this time.
But if he goes to a sewer again, we're never gonna see any of that.
Exactly.
So we could, we could dwell on the money that we lost.
Like I said, if you wanna run a line on my property, I'll be more glad to pay the tap fee.
Right. Well, I was just bringing up the equal protection clause, because I think what was good for the goose then, it surely should be good for the gander now.
Are you good to wait?
I am, I am, but I.
Let the gander figure it out.
Just bringing it up.
But we also need to look how many other businesses have bit the bullet, and.
And this would be the time for them to step forward.
You say how many others? Can you name one?
Well, I'm one, I'm a house.
But, but you, but, but you paid the tap fee.
I did.
How much would it cost you to, to put, to tap to your property?
Another two thousand dollars.
That's what it cost you?
Yes, yes, 'cause we had to get an easement through the property next door.
So that was a.
Yes.
Well, I have to do all that, and it's gonna cost me way more than that.
Right, I understand, but granted, I know you're a business, and you generate income, but.
What I'd like to find out is whether the whole program wasn't residential, or was it just commercial?
Can we, can we get the information we need for Paul to have?
I can't find my briefcase.
And then.
I don't have one. I was on council, I don't remember.
Yeah, and then, and to, we can, you'll have the information to make a decision. Are you good with that?
It's council's call. They can, it's their call to make the decision.
Yes, and they're, he's gonna give them more information to make an educated decision.
That, that way I'll know what to do, if I wanna redo my leach bed for five or six grand, or I pay a little bit more and tap in, it's, it's just, okay?
Right, and I'm not against you, I'm all for you. I just wanna be fair.
I see your point, but.
I wanna be fair, you know?
Well, that's fair, but.
What's fair for, one's fair for all.
Mine's an unusual case as far as a village is concerned, as far as, I was one of the very, I don't know any other business that didn't, was that far away from the, the trunk line of the sewer line. See, I think I didn't wanna incur that cost to run a line over two hundred and fifty foot. So I was just over that footage, and so.
And what, do you know the year they did that?
I'm sorry?
Do you know the year they did that?
Is that so? I don't know, Mike, you, you memorized a long time ago.
Before I was involved.
Yeah, I was on council, seventy-eight up through the eighties.
Seventies, seventies, probably.
Late seventies, early eighties, I believe.
Good, thank you. All right, council, we are running late.
Thanks, guys.
I forgot which one this was.
Spring, they came by at the sewer, and you had to tap into the sewer.
All right, we are, need to keep moving here. We're running late, and people are getting tired, and everybody's gotta work tomorrow, and.
I don't.
And some of us have to work tomorrow.
And school's canceled, so.
I won't take long. My name is Melvin Carpenter. I've been in Plain City forty-four and a half years. The reason I'm here tonight, this came to my attention. I'm a Vietnam vet. I did not vote in this character. I haven't voted in forty-one years. What the, what the voters vote on, I go by. If they vote it down, fine with me. If they vote it in, fine with me. I did not participate in politics. But your article, or your argument, you're in the panic mode right now. I've looked over your numbers for oh eleven, oh twelve, and oh thirteen. What took you so long to raise rates? And another one, why did you go ten-five and not ten-ten? I'm asking you, mayor.
What was it?
Why did you go ten-five or ten on sewer, five on water? Why didn't you go ten-ten?
Well, it's my understanding, you sat down with Renee today.
Yes, I did.
For a couple hours.
Yes, I did.
And you got these answers.
Yes.
And those answers aren't changing. Those answers aren't changing.
I know they're not changing, but.
To cover the payments, we did what had to be done to cover the payments.
I don't know why you didn't do it in oh eleven. Why didn't you raise it in oh eleven? You people.
Can we tell you the answer?
You've been bouncing off the red line.
Mr. Carpenter, can I answer your question?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Many things have happened over the last few years that those decisions were put off.
No, you're fine, you're fine.
Things like we, we put a moratorium on growth. We have an economic downturn. There were various levies on the ballot that we didn't feel we could, should compete against. Many decisions that made us keep putting it off, made council decide the better decision was to wait.
That's what you said in this article.
And nothing has changed.
Maybe tomorrow will bring something better. I'm here to help you. Hey!
All right, you've got a solution.
Come here. You raised a ten-five. The sewer rates in the past.
Can I, before you, before you get into this, you, you only have a few minutes. You've got about three minutes.
You're letting me talk.
I'm letting, all right, I'm just giving you a fair warning.
In oh thirteen, you took in eight hundred ninety-five thousand dollars in one sewer. You raised the rates. Oh fourteen, you're gonna take in nine hundred sixty-three thousand, two hundred fifty dollars by according to these figures I have here. Five, that's without surcharge. Oh fifteen, you're taking in one million, thirty-seven thousand, two hundred sixty-two dollars and fifty cents. That's without the surcharge. I'm trying to get you off the red line you've been bumping against for the past three years. Now, I ask you this. If a water pump goes out at the water plant, where is your maintenance fee at this?
Actually, we did talk this evening about putting together a capital improvement plan.
You need a maintenance plan, man, because you're bumping against the red line.
You're right.
And if a water, if a water pump goes out to one of these towers, you're below the red line.
Well, I don't disagree. It's.
Now, that's why I mean.
Tight.
Look. In oh sixteen, you'll be taking in one million, one hundred seventeen thousand, fifty-six dollars, and that's without the surcharge. Now, I was gonna complain about the surcharge because I don't like dictators. So when you went from five percent surcharge to ten percent surcharge, I got it right here. You could've, you could've brought a five percent surcharge. Well, you really don't need the five.
It's a five percent rate increase, sir, for, for water and a ten percent for sewer.
And?
And a ten percent surcharge for water capital.
Ten dollars.
Ten dollars, yeah.
Yeah, ten dollar a month surcharge.
For water capital.
For water. Well, that's ten dollars to me every month.
Everybody in the village, yes.
I understand that. But I'm here to let you have it.
Thank you.
You know why? Like I told you, I go by the voters. I don't see no other Plain City person in this room that's protesting to this. So tell me they're not upset. I am. But I'm gonna let you have it on one thing. You're getting a hundred and fifty-two thousand, six hundred and forty dollars in surcharge payments. Put this money towards maintenance because them water pumps at the water plant, they kick on, fill the tower up. They kick off. When the water in the towers drop down, they'll kick back on it. You got a lot of movement in it. Them motors take a lot of wear and tear when they're kicking on, under a load and kicking off and kicking on. Now, you're lucky you haven't had to buy one yet, have you? Don't know. They don't last forever, but sooner or later one's gonna fall out.
Mr. Carpenter, you're about out of time.
Pardon?
You're about out of time.
Well, I just spoke my piece.
Okay.
I'm gonna let you have your ten-dollar month.
Thank you.
I really appreciate that.
Because you know why?
I can tell myself the waters are now.
You know why? Look here, I can afford it, just like I told her that. I can afford it. But being there's no other people here, I, I expect this room to be slammed back down.
You know, if they raise a ten and ten, there'd probably be a lot of people in here. There'd be a lot, if they raise a ten and ten, there'd be a lot of people in here.
Well, it's ten and five with a hundred fifty-two thousand, six hundred and forty more dollars tap on.
I agree with you. I agree, I'm not, I agree with you, I'm just, it's, uh.
But if the Plain City people don't care, I can afford it. That's ten dollars for me is a drop in the bucket. But my question goes to the mayor.
I wouldn't do that.
How you been sleeping at night? You've let this go three years. You're bumping against the red line. If a, if a water pump or two water pumps went out, you'd be below the red line.
We, we had some water pumps go out.
And then he, he would be saying twenty dollars surcharge. Go ahead and charge him twenty bucks. I can afford it.
Mr. Carpenter.
Let's see how many of them will fill up his damn place. Here's me, bye.
And, Mr. Carpenter, we all, we all realize that things need to happen in a quick fashion and they don't always happen in a quick fashion. Wait, 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 wait. Not finished. And, you know, recommendations come and go, but we have to, we are driven by our budget, we are driven by many variables. But you don't see all that in one little article and so.
I'll say that, that's why.
Know, know that we're doing the best.
See this young lady right here to get the rest of the story.
Yeah, okay. Well, we appreciate you coming in. Everybody doesn't always do that, doesn't share their.
Well, Plain City's growing. I'm glad to see it grow. I moved here in, yeah, forty-four and a half years ago. You know my water bill was forty-four and a half years ago?
No.
What?
You want milk was forty-four and a half years ago? Oh, it was gas forty-four years ago.
Eighty-seven dollars a month, daddy, counting trash. I paid my own trash. Back then it was separate.
Eighty-seven.
It was gold. I didn't spray my lawn.
Water.
I didn't water my flowers. And then one day, here late, here wasn't too many years ago, I went to the water tap, threw up a glass of water, and it smelled like Vietnam all over again.
Yes. All right.
I died, I died in the water.
All right.
I have not drank Plain City water since. I drink bottled water.
Thanks for coming in, Mr. Carpenter.
All right. So.
Okay, so.
Do, do with the money.
We're paying bills and we're also working on a capital plan and we're done.
You got, I think two thousand dollars you're gonna be charging the Plain City people.
Well, we're hoping that.
Towards maintenance. You don't need it because you're getting it already.
The law says you have, the ordinance is written that the money is collected, the ten-dollar surcharge is to retire the debt at the sewer plant. It's very strict, very. Nothing else can be done with that surcharge other than to pay the debt at the sewer plant.
Good, because you need it. If a water pump goes out today, you're below the red line.
I understand that, and that's why I tried to explain to you today.
All right, moving on. All right, old business. Ready? Second reading?